Agreement in camera.
So just uh legal.
And the reason and the reason why?
Legal.
Land legal.
Land legal. Land legal. Okay. Nine eight, any other additions, Pastor Long?
Um, I think you could probably put under community services possibly, um, just a request of permission to represent council at the Alberta Gaming Commission.
Oh.
If you're in on behalf of the high pre-ification.
Okay.
In support of.
And that meeting is next week, so that's why it's an urgent issue.
Next week. And be low cost to.
Keep on.
Support. Uh, so pre-ification and gaming.
Five five.
So. Yep. That's where we put it. Five F five. Any other additions to the agenda? Can I have the motion then to accept the agenda as amended? Counselor Danaka?
I've got a motion to accept the agenda as amended.
All in favor? Carried. Scheduled delegations, are there any scheduled delegations?
No.
Uh, what happened to Pearl, was she not going to be a scheduled delegation or?
No. She canceled.
She canceled?
No.
Okay. Is she rescheduling?
She hasn't rescheduled.
So you'll have to speak up because I don't think people in the gathering.
She hasn't rescheduled.
Thank you. The, um, so there are no scheduled delegations, there's the public delegations, are there any public delegations? Could you please step forward and give your name?
James Weigel, um, not even that. It's a switch, right?
We like you anyway, you can.
Um, my concern, especially given recent events in Saskatchewan yesterday, is once again are the state of the railway, this entire rail line. There's been multiple derailments on this line between here and Edmonton, I'm not sure about that way. Uh, there was one right in the town of Slave Lake, there was one that wasn't too far out of Fost. It's only a matter of time and what scares the hell out of me on this is that I'm going to know before any of you because it's going to land in my living room. Uh, so my suggestion or my hope is that, uh, mayor or whoever on council can team up with the MD of Big Lakes, the Reeve, Eric Canning and Tyler Warman out of Slave Lake, whoever the Reeve of, uh, Big Lakes, uh, Lester Slave Rivers, right down the line, everybody all together and go to the federal government because I don't think it's a provincial matter and say, these guys can't be self-regulated anymore. None of us want to be on the news, you know, stepping back from the fires. How big is it? It's big.
There has been action.
There has, okay.
Between the municipalities. I believe Counselor Carrier attend, was it Counselor Carrier, was it you that attended the meeting in Slave Lake regarding emergency preparedness or what was?
Not in Slave Lake, we had a rail safety meeting in the fire hall. I believe, uh, Fire Chief Ken Mellick attended the one in Slave Lake.
And the counselor or, um, Mayor Warman has written two letters, one to the Alberta, um, Transportation, the one that regulates CN and the other to, um, Minister Peter Bone from Alberta.
Okay.
And the other one is to the Minister in of the federal government and I can't remember whose name right now who it is regarding the fact that although CN has meeting the standards that are that they're set, they're still having derailments. So there's obviously a problem with the standards.
Yeah.
Even though they're meeting them, we're still getting.
It's easy to set the bar low.
And they have six. So, so there is activity, uh, between the, the elected officials and, uh, and certainly we're well aware of what of the, of the concern and actually all of us are.
Okay, yeah, that was, as long, as long as there's heat being put on the, on the other two levels of government because like I said, you know, I like my house the way it is now, I don't need a centerpiece.
And I do think they have been slowing down below the, have they? Uh, Constable Bloom, have they been slowing down as they come through town, do you know if they've been slowing down?
Uh.
You haven't seen it really?
Am I gonna, yes, they probably will be because they have to uh, stop for the creditor thing or whatever the name is now.
Secure.
So I believe they slow down in town just so they can unload at the oil site there.
Okay. We don't, how many crossings have we got in town, one, just the one?
Two. By the MD office, um, and then.
Two. Yeah, Slave Lake I believe has four and they're already, they're really watching all of their crossings. Well, thank you very much for, uh, bringing that forward.
Yeah.
Is there any, Counselor Danaka?
I just wanna, uh, speak to the, the speed that the trains are going by, um, in the last three weeks, maybe a month, I know, like our, the truck shop is right next to the tracks and the comment has been, wow, are they ever going, so like they are crawling. Whether they're empty or not, they are crawling both ways.
Yeah, I was just gonna follow up by saying we did meet with the, um, MD Council or the, uh, Town of Slave Lake Councilors and Tatter
Mm-hmm.
in, uh, at the AUMA.
Okay.
And discuss this issue. And, um, that's one thing that he had mentioned is that he had got some confirmation from CN about the speed that they're gonna come through these communities at in order to eliminate some of the potential hazard of derailment. And if you want to overlook, here's one of the letters that went out too.
Oh, awesome, uh, can you email that to him?
Yeah.
Okay, that'd be awesome. And slowing down through town is fine, but when you're in between the communities, you're still gonna get, obviously if the standards are set so low, you can still get derailments. Uh, you know, the fire department will, will still have to deal with it, um.
Or the lake.
Or the lake, you know, Fost isn't that far off the lake, Whitewater's right on there.
And that is the major concern that they've got is the, the spill, the tracks are along the lake and any spill that's gonna affect the lake. And a lot of those communities, all of those communities draw their drinking water from that lake. So it is a, uh, a major concern of the municipalities, both the MDs and then of course the two towns on either end, as well as the First Nations.
Absolutely, absolutely.
So they're, they're all, actually, everyone is really working as a group and.
Everybody agrees on something?
Yeah.
This one they do. And they've been all kind of emailing any information back and forth. So, uh, one of the things that the watershed people are also coming forward and saying, you know, that this is gonna impact it, it will impact the watershed.
Absolutely, absolutely.
So, so yeah, um.
Well, as long as the communication is there, that, that, that was, I mean, I just wanted to make sure. It's, I look out my window every day and I see that train go by and it's not that far away.
And they're getting longer. They're getting longer.
They're getting longer and it's mostly petroleum products now. Um, I, I really don't care if a grain car dumps in front of my house, I do care if an oil tanker dumps in front of my house.
Um, one thing that they do know, and I think the Fire Chief is aware of this, every community has got someone in that community that is the point contact. So, we just don't know who they are and we're trying to find those people, what their names are, CN doesn't really wanna release them. But Cano, So, Fost, Juicer, every one of those communities, there's a contact person in there for CN. I'm just not sure who they are and I'm not sure if you know either, do you?
Uh, I do have a book, I don't know if it has names for all the little communities, I know they do for our community and the person looking after our community is actually based out of McLennan. Cause McLennan is her, their main.
So maybe that's why, uh, Slave Lake is really following this up, they want to know who these people are. Because obviously they're gonna be the first ones that are gonna be aware that, hey, the train is derailed.
It's in somebody's backyard, happened already.
Yes, so.
The meeting that we had at the fire hall, uh, CN told us that from high level to Westlock, the train maximum speed is thirty kilometers an hour. And through towns they have to go fifteen kilometers an hour, so.
Is that new or is that, um?
Well, that's been the last year, I guess is what they.
Okay, so that's, they've come down because we were told twenty-five?
Yeah, it was forty kilometers.
So it's, it's thirty over the country now, it's fifteen through town, so. But I, I still agree that, I don't know, that they assured me that their tracks are up to, uh, Transport Canada's specs, but, uh.
The specs might be low.
Well, I'm not sure, it must've been maybe up the, the, um, AUMA when we were talking to Slave Lake. Something along every eight, uh, of those beams across, one out of every eight has to be good, the rest doesn't have.
Twice.
Yeah, that's it.
Never really goes standard.
Well, in a thirty, in a thirty, or thirty-nine foot rail, they have to have five good ties, or is it eight good ties, I can't remember now. I'd have to go back and look at my notes from Slave Lake meeting, but I was flabbergasted when I, when I heard that, but, uh.
And who, who sets those standards?
Transport Canada.
Transport Canada.
They, again, that, and that's, you guys are working on that, keep the pressure up because we can't get forward.
All right, thank you, we have to move along.
Yeah.
Unscheduled delegate or unscheduled, thank you very much.
Thanks for having me.
Is there any other public delegations here? No other public delegations? I see Mr. Thiessen is sitting way in the background. Mr. Thiessen is the new recreation director for those that, uh, haven't met him before. He's obviously bored, he's come to a council meeting. All right, the, uh, well, we, moving on, the minutes of the special meeting at council, September ninth, twenty fourteen, are there any errors or omissions?
Make a motion to approve the minutes as presented.
Discussion, all in favor? Minutes of the regular council meeting, September tenth, are there any errors or omissions? Will we have a motion then, Counselor Danaka?
That council approved the minutes from the regular meeting, council held on September tenth, twenty fourteen.
Discussion, all in favor? That motion is carried. The special meeting of council, the CAO performance evaluation, September seventeenth. Counselor Emtor?
Make a motion to approve the minutes as presented.
Discussion, all in favor? That motion is carried. The next item is the financial statements as of August thirty-first, twenty fourteen. Could I have a motion on this one, please? Counselor Carrier?
Let council receive the financial statements presented for August twenty-fourteen for information.
Discussion, any questions on this? Counselor Emtor?
I was wondering if the capital purchases or, um, airport tanks and purchase of the town building were on this report yet.
I don't think so.
Okay.
Are there any other questions regarding this? Uh, the sheet paper that, uh, you've got on council expenses, is that?
That's just FYI.
FYI, okay, is there any other regarding this report? Okay, uh, we have a motion, could you read the motion back, please?
Moved by Deputy Mayor Carrier that council received the financial statements for August two thousand and fourteen as presented, presented, sorry, for information.
All in favor? That motion is carried, proposed bylaw. Counselor Emtor?
I'd like to make a motion that we move this item to the November twenty-sixth meeting.
So that motion is there, is that enough time?
That gives you a month and a half.
November twenty-sixth. Right, could you tell, I'd like to know what?
Um, multiple discussions, uh, one of the, uh, conversation I had with another counselor, um, and the CAO was that I'd like to see the net effect, since taxes are covering utilities, that taxes lower in accordance with the increase in utilities. The other conversation I had with another counselor was that why don't we wait and see what the MD is doing, uh, with the intermunicipal agreement? Uh, because that can greatly affect our finances. And they said a month, so if I give a month and a half, hopefully we have something.
Do we need lead time for any of this? Mr. Tamako?
Um, then, I'm not too sure what the answer is, I mean, there are so many conflicting positions on it. It could be not the battery sales, it could be generally, the February, it could be never, so there's no real time set for it to come to council, separate councils' wisdom in when they want to see.
We're just sort of restricted by a bylaw as to when we can implement a new water rate, is that not correct?
Right, you, as you, the bylaw states that, uh, if you really, if you want a new bylaw, then you have to do sixty days so that generally fresh you can implement it. But you can still go with a old bylaw and that's still okay, right?
So can you do it sixty days and your sixty days notice in January first for your, for your rate increase to be March first, does it matter, does it have to be as of the first of the year?
It doesn't matter.
So it's just sixty days?
Sixty days if you want to do it January first.
Okay, but sixty days if you don't, if you wanna do it February first, you still require sixty days notice?
Cause, yes, sixty days notice.
Okay, so, doesn't matter when you implement it, it's sixty days notice, once you decide to implement it, sixty days later it comes into effect.
Exactly.
Okay.
No, I agree with, um, Counselor Emtor, I think that we should maybe wait, there's a little more information that we need to gather and, um, um, we need to look at, at, uh, cost recovery with the, um, with the flat rate without flat rate and kind of do a little bit more comparison, I think.
And how are we going to do this comparison or are we doing a working meeting to discuss it or at what point, where are we getting this, what are we doing with this information you're gathering, if anybody is gathering?
Well, we can do our own research to a certain degree, right, I mean, some of this comes from what is the MD charging, how are they charging things out, we need to sort of compare. We've got MD users that are using town water rate, we need to deal with that, we need to look at that, cause it, we, we can't increase, increase water rates just to high pre-residence. It has to be uniformly across the board and in it, it's a, it's, it's not a, it's not totally clear how we can do that with the way they're, the way that, um, we're looking at it now.
So are we asking for more information to be gathered by the CAO, by administration?
I would believe so. Um, I, I provided a, a quick little comparison for a family of four to show you where we sit currently, where we sit with the proposed. But like I said, uh, since our taxes are currently covering it, um, I'd like to see the matching, a drop in taxes to match the increase in utilities if they move forward with this. At the same time, I'd like to defer it to do more research and to find out how things are going with the intermunicipal agreement.
Okay, all right, so, so we kind of know on November twenty-sixth we will have more information coming in or?
We, we need to be specific with administration what we want though, so we're gonna have to try and figure something out.
Right. At a, so the direction will be forthcoming probably at a meeting before November twenty-sixth.
Yeah, hopefully in the next one.
All right. Any other comments, questions? Yes?
The only thing I want to advise is that, uh, uh, the way taxes work, uh, it all depends on your amount of services that you want. So it's not relative to whether you add to utility rates or you drop utility rates. Uh, if you increase that amount of services that you need, obviously you increase the taxes that you need to provide those services for the municipality. So it's much independent of utilities rates.
But we're being told that the taxes right now are covering a shortfall of the utilities, right?
What, what, what is being said is that the amortization being factored in, for example, water,
Mm-hmm.
uh, then you have a deficit in the water account.
Okay.
So at the end of the day, when we have the end capital revenue, that's when you're able to balance your books. So that's, that's the, that's the picture that is being pa- painted. By the way taxes work, you're looking at your, uh, tax revenue over your assessment. So when your assessment goes up, your bill rate drops. And if you increase the number of services in the municipality, obviously your tax revenue will increase and then your bill rate will go up. So, either way, um, one of the things that I just want to bring to attention, I think that made it very, very helpful, is that in two thousand and five, your flat rate for water was five dollars. And then went up to, and then the variable was a dollar fifty-three. Uh, two thousand and eleven, the flat rate was eleven dollars and, uh, the variable rate was two dollars and fourteen cents. Twenty-twelve, you decided that you'll keep the flat rate the same, eleven dollars. And you decided to increase the variable rate to two dollars and forty-six cents. So, the proposed, uh, 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 direction is that to have flat rate go to thirteen dollars per month and then have an increase in the variable to two dollars and eighty-two cents. When we increase it to two dollars, when we increase to two dollars and eighty-two cents, immediately affects the MD as well. So that's the way it works.
All right. Okay, so the motion is, could you please read it back?
Moved by Counselor Emtor, that council postponed the proposed bylaw zero eight, two thousand and fourteen to amend the utility rate schedule to November twenty-sixth, two thousand and fourteen, regular meetings council.
All in favor? Motion is passed. Next item is Railway Avenue, page twenty-seven. Mr. Thiessen, if you, uh, there's a package at the back on the table of the agenda, oh, you got it, okay, okay. Um, okay, so Railway Avenue, could I have a motion then, please? Pastor Danaka?
I make a motion that council direct administration to send a letter to Tr- Alberta Transportation requesting funding for Fiftyth Avenue, way of one third split between the town of High Bridge, Municipal District of Big Lakes and the province of Alberta for the mayor or deputy mayor and Reeve or Deputy Reeve's signature and for a forty percent of the total cost of Fiftyth Avenue road repairs to the twenty-fifteen capital budget.
All right, so, the recommended action came out of the intermunicipal, um, meeting with the MD supporting the fact that we should send one more letter to the new Minister of Transportation. I think at the AUMA meeting, we made it quite clear that we were still looking for our one-third partnership agreement and we would try again. But in, and the second half of the motion is, we still have to move forward, as Mr. Tamako has said, we've got to get this done, so we should be putting the forty percent aside just in case we don't get the one-third. And I believe at the intermunicipal, did the MD agree to the sixty? Who said they take it back? They take it back, okay, so we may be putting forty percent aside and it may be more than forty percent, but at least we will make the effort. Now, Mr. Tamako?
I had an interesting discussion with Bill today and I don't want to be put on record, but, uh, it may appear that even the cost of doing that road may be a little much lower than we think. Uh, and we kind of ran into a s- a scenario where, um, it's very difficult to say this, uh, but it's looking promising, we are talking between the fact that there are words being had that maybe the provincial government may be favorable to, uh, helping us out. And, uh, at the same time, uh, I think the MD is moving towards a sixty-fourty idea, but it's all up to their council. Uh, but we also had a contractor come in and give us a, uh, uh, some kind of costing which is much lower than the, what the engineers are giving us. Uh, if we were to march on it today, we could, then it'd break everybody's form at night, but it makes it us to go out to tender. Um, we could be spending anywhere close to six hundred thousand to do this, if we're to do it next week. But it's just impossible because you have to advertise it and tender it and all of those things, but it's, it's looking good. It's something that I'm sure if we don't even do it this year, definitely next year we'll have it covered and then make sure that that rule is taken.
Did the, did the MD say anything about the fact that the road south of town is falling apart on them?
No.
Maybe the fifth year?
The highway.
Going further.
But, um, nobody discussed that.
Okay.
That's their.
All right, so we have the, uh, the motion, all in favor? The motion is carried. The next item on this, um, agenda is the citizens' budget, did anyone here get a chance to to participate in that? Counselor Dan, uh, Rose?
Um, it was, this is the webinar that we went to, is it?
Yeah.
Um.
Would you like to make a motion on which, which you thought would be the recommended action? Counselor Quentin, or Quentin?
We're, we're, yeah, we're, we're both, we're all watching you, Debbie, see if you're gonna speak or not, I just.
Waiting, waiting. Sorry, I was confused, I was waiting for Brian to be here to see what to talk to it.
Right, make a motion to council forward the request to purchase the citizens' budget software services to the budget deliberation, that way he can be here to speak on it.
Um, I'll make a.
Does anybody now, we don't have, we haven't, someone can you?
Or the gentleman.
Okay, all right. So you're forwarding it to budget deliberation? Do you want to speak as to what did you hear from them?
Um, what I got out of it, I think it's about probably very, uh, a very good idea. Um, it's really not that expensive and it, it's a really great form, format to allow the community to, um, communicate back with us. So, I mean, I won't go into that detail, we'll call that opportunity to kind of take a look at it again and maybe that's what we need is to make that presentation somehow. Well, if there's a video tape? Presentation that maybe we can, um, make sure that everybody gets an opportunity to look at and then we can discuss everybody's thoughts on it, but I, I don't think it's, I think it's a very affordable way to, um, get some feedback.
So when you push it to budget deliberation, Counselor Emtor?
Mm-hmm.
What, what point do the citizens get to participate? To?
At the budget. Their budgets are all open meeting, right, so they can be there present at any one of our meetings to give their point of view.
And this is like a six week or a, a four week span that you would, uh, run the software or you would run the, the survey? So you don't need that much time, we need a little bit of time to prepare it, but o- otherwise we, we would just be running it just before we need to make some decisions.
Oh, okay, so, so pushing it towards the, the first meeting of the twenty-fifteen budget deliberations is not going to say, oh, it's too late, we can't do it?
Their recommendation was to do it as soon as possible to get that feedback before the end of the year. I don't know that that's a hundred percent necessary though, we're not quite ready to, not everybody understands nothing about the product. I think that it sounded like it could be implemented very quickly. It needed some administration time and, and then about four weeks to, to run that survey.
Okay, so we could pass this motion if Counselor Panasik would like it brought forward again before budget deliberations.
Sure.
He can put it back on the agenda.
Yeah.
All right. Okay, all in favor then for budget deliberations? That motion is carried. And then we have the reimbursement of lunch expenses. And you have got the backup information where elections Alberta has said this is not a partisan, uh, item. And, and Counselor Carrier?
Make a motion that council approve the request for reimbursement of hosting expense in the amount of one forty-seven sixty-two. For Mayor Linda Cox for a working lunch meeting with Daniel Smith, leader of the opposition on July twenty-third, twenty fourteen.
Is there any discussion on this? Counselor, I'm, I'm really not doing this one. That one, that one. I want to see Counselor Michael, I want everybody's. I'm so, we're so friendly since AUMA. Pastor Long?
I see. Um. My only concern and, and regardless of how this vote goes, um, we have a procedural bylaw and that was my position all the way along with this. Um, I wasn't necessarily concerned whether it was partisan or not, it was, it was something that certainly brought up, that wasn't a big issue. The issue for me, of course, was that our procedural bylaw, we cannot, if, if I was to have yourself, myself and, and Counselor Danaka at the lunch and we all said, yeah, this is okay, it still, it still couldn't imply, or we couldn't accept it as, as, as being okay until, unless it was a council resolution. If there was three counselors and yourself there, we wouldn't have been able to make a decision because that would've been acting as a quorum. So, it doesn't really matter if, if Counselor Panasik was in favor or not, it just comes down to procedural bylaw. Um, I understand why and, and, and I appreciate the letter. Um, but for me, it's a concern that we have that procedural bylaw in place and are adhering to it more stringently as a result of previous councils. And, and so, I, I really want to try to stick to our procedural bylaws as tightly as possible, um.
I understand what you're saying, I think, and I think that this is, uh, this actual issue is something that should be brought forward on the roles and responsibility worksheet that we're having. I understand what you're saying. I think, and I think that this is, uh, this actual issue is something that should be brought forward on roles and responsibility workshop that we're having.
Absolutely.
Because this is, um, it, it is becoming a problem with trying to host anybody that is coming into our community.
Yep.
So it's, it's got to be addressed in some method. Councillor Ampere?
Yeah.
I, I believe the bylaw has a, a structure in place already that you go ahead and pay for it out of your pocket, then you bring it to council and council can agree or not to reimburse. So it is following the bylaw. Cause the town didn't pay for it. The person paid for it. Now the person comes to council and says, hey, do you agree with me or not that this is the intent?
Councillor, um, Carrier?
In light of the new information that we've received stating, and there is lots of information here, thank you for that, that it is not partisan. It says, it was just a get together meeting, uh, as long as no motions were made, no Donatia made, when is a meeting, a meeting. I'm sure all we were doing was talking about the town's needs. There was no motion made, no intent of that way, so therefore I am in favor of this go around in light of the new information.
Alright, anything else? Councillor Rose?
I am concerned with the budget. I did have a meeting before this session and with special meeting of council. And at that meeting, um, I know I personally said that I, I got your email and the email said, I directed administration to book a luncheon and invite council to come. The MD wasn't invited at that point in time. It was just our council and that you had asked our administration to book a luncheon. We had suggested, and I know I was part of that suggestion and I'm not, I'm not certain who all spoke about, about it, but we had suggested, well, that it shouldn't be a taxpayers' cost, that we should probably host it at a, at a restaurant where everybody could pay for their own lunch. And at that point, it still was still council and although it wasn't, um, an, a vote because we were talking on different matters, there just was a conversation. And from there I heard that you had changed your mind and you're having it at Smitty's. Afterwards I heard you invited the MD and then you picked up the tab. So I mean, there, there was a discussion prior to a special council meeting where my understanding from that meeting was that I didn't, I didn't get the impression that everybody approved the spending of, or hosting this as a, as a town event or as a town council event.
Um, I did not invite.
Certainly was my impression that, yeah.
I did not invite the MD. The, uh, the, you know, the opposition was given the option because only two people, three people, yourself, Mister Councillor Panasik and myself were the only ones that said that we're going to be there. And yes, we did say perhaps we should hold it at a luncheon. I would have expected the CAO at that point to say, hey, we need a resolution, but nobody stepped forward to help us in this matter. And the guidance that we received, I received was nil other than good, the leader of the opposition is here, here's an opportunity to talk to them, host it. And so I did as according to the, the procedure bylaw which says host, bring it forward and ask for reimbursement. I guess that's what I did. Sorry.
Because the other, s- sorry, the, the other thing that I, that makes me a little bit concerned is that, this is the, um, they actually requested a visit.
Yes.
It wasn't that you went chasing them down, right? So we weren't, we weren't trying to host it. They had invited themselves to the community and invited obviously the MD, right? So at that point, I don't necessarily think it was our responsibility to post the cost of it unless we had made some decision. I, I would have thought that, that with, with them inviting us, just like with the, um, Prentice invitation, everybody was invited to something that he hosted. We didn't, we weren't expected to put in any cost. We all went, we attended, nobody charged the town for our time. We just went to a, a function that Prentice put on, right?
Difference between this, uh, the leadership, the, the leader of the opposition attending and Mister Prentice attending is we were specifically told, you are not here as a member of council or the mayor. Come as a private citizen. We were told that right out. Don't wanna come as a private citizen, don't come. And we were told that.
Well, but I mean, I was there and the, the paper took a picture of you as the mayor. I mean, I mean, the, the reality of that is, it's handled anywhere without, yeah.
So. That, that's just the way it is. But I spoke and I only spoke as a private citizen. I did not identify myself as the mayor.
No, those are.
Because that was not the, the position that I was at with Mister Prentice. At this meeting, I was there representing the town. The councillor Panasik who also came, the MD of the Reeve, uh, the MD of the Reeve, the councillors, all of these people were there as elected officials. And again, when a, when a person comes into our community, I, I myself as a host would not say, oh, by the way, you have to each divvy up your own bill. That to me is pretty chintzy when you're looking at an opportunity to spend time with the leader of the opposition and present the, the problems that we're having in our town. And especially with three quarters an hour, a one-on-one with the potential premier of the province. What could you ask for other than, well, by the way, you'll have to pick up the bill? I, I don't think that that's quite the way things are done.
Well, isn't it our understanding though that when Mister, when councillor Panasik was here, he did say that she went to pick up the bill and you took it from her? I mean, and I, I just, I do.
Um, because as a host, what would you expect?
Well, isn't the MD and us both sort of then hosting? Cause weren't we both invited? Like, I'm, I'm a little bit confused. And I guess my biggest concern is the fact that we did have a meeting. It was, it was discussed. And, and, and there was an impression from there that everybody was in agreement that this really wasn't, uh, to be a cost. Or i- if you, if you thought that, that it should be, I would have wished that we would have had more of a conversation at that point in time, or you said, I really think then I would like to have the opportunity to pick up this bill and, and, and then we would have had, had that conversation. Like, I certainly thought that we.
Okay. I understand what you're saying and I take that under advisement and I think the rest of the council has also heard what you're, you're saying. Um, again, roles and responsibilities at that workshop. I think this is certainly an item to be brought up. Are there any other concerns?
Madam Mayor, I need to make a statement. I think, uh, uh, if you read clearly through the, uh, clear county inspection report, uh, these are some of the things that led to the inspection.
Yes.
If you're representing the town, council has to give you clear direction that you are representing the town. The MGA is very clear that you have my resolution. If any of you go out there and have a meeting with any of the opposition party and bring a bill to the rate payer, it does against the MGA. The advisers in municipal affairs, three of them spoke, one of them was very clear, uh, to deputy, uh, uh, Carrier that this was not, uh, proper. The other person that you spoke to also said it was improper, it was within a great area. I spoke to municipal affairs last week. It's an issue that is at municipal affairs and we are very unhappy about the fact that council or members of council will go out there and spend money and bring it to council and expect the rate payer to pay for it. Council asked by resolution. I mean, the town is put at risk when this kind of behavior is left unchecked. I will have to advise council on that.
Mister Tomaclo? Mister Tomaclo, did you speak to Deserie Courier regarding this issue?
I did speak to her.
And did you, uh, give her the opinion of Elections Alberta?
I did give her the opinion of Elections Alberta, I did.
Because I emailed her Elections Alberta at the.
I did. There are two parts issue. It's whether you have the, you have the cons- consent from council by resolution to represent them and to spend money. That is the issue. It's not about even them being partisan. So if any council member decides to go and have supper with a politician and they say, well, we are speaking on behalf of the town, it's five hundred dollars. What are you going to say? This is a precedent.
Fine. Again, this should be brought up, not only as the roles and responsibilities, but I believe it should also be brought up at the mediation and conflict workshop that we're having. Because there seems to be a lot of disagreement on how things are being presented and the information that's being presented. Because Ms. Courier basically said Elections Alberta is the final arbitrator of the Elections Finance and Contribution Act. And she may give an opinion, but it is not up to her to tell what Elections Alberta feels is partisan and what it isn't. And once she received that opinion, she retracted everything that she said. Councillor Danaka?
I phoned and spoke to Tony at Municipal Affairs today for some, a little bit more clarification based on the, the extra information that you had presented from Elections Canada or Elections Alberta. And, um, basically he said, um, if, if no, no act or, um, was broken either the municipal law, but at the MGA or the Elections Act, he said, from his point of view, he said, they have no problem, but he said, I can't advise you as it's what your council decides. And I do agree that we need to get some clarification because I think this issue is going to be coming up more than just this time. Um.
Alright.
Be- based on what you've provided, the other thing that he said, it's, and we were told right from the get-go by the CAO, is that perception, perception, perception. If somebody can perceive that that is viewed, if one person receives that as a partisan thing, he said, then you have a problem. I'm, I'm, I'm kind of waffling on this as to where I'm going, but I will make my decision during the vote.
Alright. Are there any other comments? I think we beat this one to death. Alright. Um, I'm sure Mister Panasik came in at the tail end. You are aware of the conversation, you have been back and forth, you've read the agenda. Do you feel that you have enough information to make your decision?
Um. Yeah.
Alright then. All, could you read the motion back, please?
Moved by Deputy Mayor Carrier. That council approved the request for reimbursement of hosting expense in the amount of a hundred and forty seven dollars sixty two cents for Mayor Linda Cox for a working lunch meeting with Danielle Smith, leader of the opposition on July twenty third, two thousand and fourteen.
All in favor? Opposed? Motion is carried. Next item of business is the Intermunicipal class sharing agreement draft.
The one that you had, I think the color didn't come out right, Sean.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, so, don't laugh. Be, be kind, you know, and, and thank you for bringing it to my attention, uh, that's it. But I, I thought that when it was printed, you had it.
It talks about red.
Yeah, I talked about the red and I was so much, it was gray. It was gray. Yeah, sorry. Yeah.
It's like gray.
Yeah.
Councillor Carrier?
Uh, just to make a motion here, I'd like to make a motion that this gets carried to our next regular council meeting so that we can better go over this agenda, this, for this, uh, class sharing. There's so many errors and spelling mistakes and, I mean, I'm part of this negotiating committee and I find this confusing. There's information here for, you were asking for a sixty forty split. My city MD is only getting forty, we're doing the sixty. I don't think this is done very well and I'd like to see it brought back at the next meeting.
So the next meeting of council will be October twenty second. And the very next day we meet to discuss this agreement, that'd be the twenty third. We could push that agreement back. The council will be intergovernmental if we're not ready.
Push the Intermunicipal back?
The Intermunicipal on the twenty third. Because if we're going to discuss this on the twenty second, then we're probably going to need time to, to resubmit it to them. Well, they have to have a chance to review.
Oh, yeah, I would agree, but, uh, I'm not sure why we wouldn't discuss it now.
If you look at, um, page three and you look at, uh, D one D, um, instead of paying a fifty fifty split, um, the Big Lakes agrees to pay forty percent, the town with sixty. Um, D one D, again, the MD is dropping from fifty to forty. Um, I'm not sure why we're asking the MD to pay less.
It's supposed to be sixty.
Yeah, so there's quite a few in here.
So you just want administration to correct those and bring that back?
That, that would be one of the things that we'd ask. It's just clarification, right? Uh, we could go through line by line tonight, but I'd rather have it just corrected and then.
Yeah, we, you know, section should have sixty percent. Is there anything else?
Um.
Well, there's the typos. I mean, I went through it and on page, uh.
Yeah, I ignored the typos, man. Let me just try to.
No, this is a whole clause that didn't make any sense. Oh.
Well, there's a.
Page forty five. There's a, two clauses there, F and G, they repeat each other. There is page, uh, page forty nine, clause G. I'm not sure how this is supposed to read. But it said it's a repetition, I pray shall be obligated, and that says, I pray shall be obligated to pay Big Lakes the withholding of up to fifty, fifteen percent, but that's not the way it is written. Um, there's the exam and I agree. So, so we bring it back on October twenty second. That means that the Intermunicipal, they have to be notified that we will not be able to be discussing this at their October twenty third meeting because they haven't had a chance to review it.
Well, this is.
Cause we can prove it on the twenty second, but we're not gonna give it to them at eight o'clock in the morning and expect them to have an answer by noon.
Well, they won't have an answer, but we could present it.
Yes, we, you could, you could present it at that meeting.
And there'd probably some value to actually doing that. This is a negotiation anyway, right? This isn't them coming ready to decide on it. I mean, ultimately, if we're gonna make any changes to what we discussed at the Intermunicipal, which we, we did discuss right there at Intermunicipal,
Yeah.
that they're gonna have to bring it back to their council and all they're gonna do is accept our presentation and go from there.
At nine, uh, our section nine O, um, two, uh, subsection two, uh, twenty percent of the high stream water goes to the MD co-op. Um, I'd also like to include bulk water. So, I mean, if it's thirty percent now instead, that's one thing for you guys to look at. Or does that improve?
How can we determine who's taking bulk water though?
I'm not sure who in town buys, what, a hundred and fifty, three hundred gallon bulk tanks.
Or just the.
Yeah.
All of the water plant, they, uh, that's where the farmers all go.
Right, but that's the MD.
So what I'm saying is that bulk sales are most likely MD. I agree with you, right?
Are they First Nations though?
Actually, I don't know.
Well, that's, that's my question. This, is that we can actually hold it all, MD sales at, at the bulk station, or the bulk, the bulk.
I, yeah. I don't know. So. I, I, I don't know. Some, maybe that's something, but, uh, uh.
Alright. So if we're gonna go through this line by line, we're gonna need some time. And this is a big negotiation. It's a five-year contract. I don't think it's something really that we're gonna be able to do at council meeting that is with all the rest of the business. Councillor Ampere?
Can this be added to the, uh, next Wednesday's agenda?
Well, I'm looking at the organizational meeting on October fifteenth. Is that a possibility?
I, 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 I don't think you're going line by line, um, uh, irrespective of the, uh, grammar, grammatical errors. The main ideas that are posited are in here. So we're going by the ideas. What's most important for administration is to make sure that at the end of the day, when the agreement is sorted out, that everything is grammatically correct. So you are going by the ideas. So if we were to go through this, we are going to go through the ideas, the things that you want and the things that the MD doesn't want. So you're not gonna go line by line. The issues of what is grammatically correct or not is what administration will work on for the finer details. So if we went through this amount of advice and I go through it, you go through the suggestions that they have given to me before, like you want a skateboard park, you want a one hundred and twenty percent, you want a sixty forty split, uh, split. Uh, even though the, those parts are set forty percent, we just change them to sixty percent. So most of the ideas, the infrastructure, one million, one point five million, all those ideas I have here, that is what I will be presenting to you. The MD has also presented me a set of ideas. Those are the ones that you will deliberate on and tell me exactly what you want kept in this. So, I mean, regardless of the grammatical aspect, when once, once you agree on what you want, then we will prepare this and take it back to the municipal negotiating committee. Then you at that point will look at, for example, the issue of the skateboard park. Should it be added or it should not be added? Because that's a central disagreement between you. If you agree on that, then that agreement will come back to council resolved for you guys to have the final, uh, uh, vote on it. That is the intent, not to go line by line, but to look at a set of ideas that you have already given to me, but we already in negotiations. And the MD has also presented its set of ideas. So it's most important to look at the ideas more than just the line by line, but it gets council's.
Councillor Long?
And for the most part, uh, in all respects, uh.
In the most part, uh, in all due respect, uh, how do you say, Counselor? To our C A O, um, but if I'm going to vote on something, it it has to be really clear because because when I'm voting on it, I'm voting on behalf of the people of Town High Prairie. If somebody looked at this from Town High Prairie, they'd go, what? There's some inconsistencies. And and the fifty-forty numbers that are crossed out, um, I I would like it to be clear as well, um, before I hear any.
Counselor Carrier and then Counselor Panasek.
Okay, I was gonna just amend my motion to put it on to our organizational meeting on the fifteenth. And I was gonna say call the question, but.
Counselor Panasek?
No, I I don't have a problem with it going on if we can fit it into the organizational meeting. But again, we talk of all the things dragging on. I think if we can address the big issues, the big questions, it would be good. And either do it now or on the fifteenth would be good when we could have a cleaner document. Either way, it would work well, but um, a couple of, you know, fifty-forty changes or sixty-forty changes and then some some grammatical errors for me isn't a big deal. I can, you know, we could make those changes in a motion to say make the changes here, here, and here, and then we could vote to approve it. And if there was any other change, like there was three or four, let's go ahead and look at it just so we can have something to take forward and not hold the, hold the intermunicipal uh negotiating back. We want to keep that moving ahead.
So could you read the motion, please?
Moved by Deputy Mayor Carrier. That council postponed the draft intermunicipal cost sharing agreement until the October fifteenth, two thousand and fourteen organizational meeting at council.
So we have a discussion on that? All in favor? Opposed? Okay, this motion is carried. Next item is the Alberta Urban Disponement Association follow-up letters. Do you have a motion, please, Counselor?
Just just before we do that, I'm just wondering about with this, there's obviously lots of people that found lots of errors. Is there some way of leaving those with administration so that they can catch all of those errors? Because sometimes when you create a document, you don't see the errors that people were referring to. So if if there's some way of leaving those with admin so that they can compile them all together, then we won't have any more errors in the next version?
So those that that found errors, mark up your script and uh drop it on to the C A O. All right. Next item then is the follow-up letters.
Request for proposal.
Right?
Request for proposal, land use bylaw?
Fifty-five.
Oh, yes, request for proposal. Sorry about that. Land use bylaw? Do you have a motion, please? Counselor Danaka?
The council approved the request for proposal bid for the Town of High Prairie land use bylaw, complete review for the amount of thirty-seven thousand fifty-five, five hundred and fifty-five dollars to be awarded to Mackenzie Municipal Services Agency.
Discussion? Counselor After?
Does anybody recall what it would cost for us to join the Mackenzie Municipal Services Agency?
I believe that they said sixty thousand.
Hundred thousand.
That was an ask.
Yeah, maybe two hundred thousand.
Okay, well, that was.
They do this for free if we're a member?
But do we want to be a member? Um, maybe this is a good chance to see what it is that they're doing.
And how well they do it.
And how well they do it. Any other discussion? Counselor Panasek?
I'm just wondering, we uh we did look at the lowest bid, Opus Stewart, where, what was, that wasn't discussed in the uh, in the request for a decision, why that one was written off as as not a viable option.
The analysis that I did mainly, and I call on the references from Mackenzie as well, and a little biased based on the fact that Mackenzie had made a presentation to us. Um, on the same way, I could have gone with Opus, but just had a feeling that Mackenzie could provide a little bit more for us and lead it more towards the town. Uh, that's the, that's the, yeah. And they had references that we had checked. Those references indicated to us that they had done some good work, Mackenzie, and they had a reference for Opus. And so based on the references, I felt that for a little bit more money, we could go with Mackenzie uh, or even go with I S L. But one of the, one of the strategies here is that even if you went with Mackenzie, we could still use I S L to do some supervisory supervisory work, see if it worked for us.
So we don't know if Stewart Weir's is a good proposal or or not, really?
Well, I I think toe-to-toe, um, they are all within the ballpark, but I had more confidence based on the reference check for Mackenzie.
Ju- just a comment that I've done some some work with Stewart Weir through the college, and I found them to be very good. But it hasn't been in municipal plan, so that's why I got it tempered. Like, I know it's a it's a good organization, but I have no idea if they're good at municipal planning services. I know I've dealt with them on surveying stuff, and they've been very good. But in this realm, I don't know, so that's why I was wondering.
I I worked with Stewart Weir for close to over ten years as well.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, and in First Nations work. They do great work. Again, you're right. I mean, this power, uh, Mackenzie seemed to be toe-to-toe with I S L, and they seem to be much cheaper than I S L. So that's where the decision came from.
When you say that I S L will be doing supervisory work, do we have a contract with outside I S L at the town?
Uh, we we have a ongoing support from I S L. They've done the presentations to you and everything. They've come here to help us. From time to time, when we need help, we call I S L. So they've been the support for the town from time to time. And if we have any difficulty, we always tend to I S L. I don't have any difficulty. If we're in the process, we tend to isolate, see what is this understanding here, is it going in the right direction? I don't think it's anything bad for the town. It's a good thing.
So we might have costs on top of the contract?
I don't, I'm not hoping that the town would uh would expend more than anything. That's unreasonable. But it's always good to make sure that there's a second eye, and that's what we intend to do.
So if I S L got the contract, who would be the second eye for them?
And the reason why we suggest uh Mackenzie, I S L is very experienced. If you look at the, if you look at their profile, they're very experienced. I mean, uh, the people that are doing the work. Um, Mackenzie is, um, Mackenzie, in my estimate, is not as, use the word, as good as I S L in my review. I S L already is doing something for the town, to support us in terms of development assistance. All I'm trying to say is that we may or may not use them, but if we need to use them as a second pair of eyes within reasonable cost, we will use them, but not unreasonably. And it's good for the town to have just a second pair of eyes. It's not that we're giving a contract to two people, no. Uh, I may not have mentioned that, but if something comes up, we need to call Dave McGray and say, yeah, yeah.
Um, I S L's staffing too. They have three or four, five different offices in Alberta. So they're, they have senior engineers that work on land use bylaws all the time, where Mackenzie only has a staff of, I think, three or four people. So they're less uh experienced than I S L would be, and they have less um client, or less employment as I S L would be.
Well, using that rationale, wouldn't Opus Stewart Weir be a better, because they have many offices also, don't they?
But you just heard from uh Counselor Panasek that in the municipal world, yeah, resume doesn't come out like they have much experience. Mackenzie is, in my estimate, way above Opus when it comes to municipal work. But again, it's within a pair of council if you want to choose Opus.
Any other comments?
Just gonna say, I think that if we're if we're considering using Mackenzie going forward in in other aspects, this might be a good test to to use them. And 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 I agree that it's nice to have I S L as as sort of an overseer if necessary. I mean, how can, how else can we give somebody a sort of a test if we are struggling, if they are struggling, if we do need some um some clarity? We 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 have sort of that backup because, you know, we have already a level of trust with I S L because we've been we've been dealing with them, so we know what they're sort of capable of. I mean, I would prefer that it doesn't cost us anything more than this quote.
But we won't cut the load.
But, I mean, that's that's available for us, I guess, if we need to. But it would give us a a measure to take a look at what Mackenzie could do.
Counselor Ball?
My experience in the past has been that when you deal with companies such as I S L and focus on other organizations that are out there, they're going to take this bylaw from the last town that they did work on. And they're gonna cut out Fairview, and they're gonna pop in High Prairie. And they'll tailor it up that way. They've got a cookie cutter template. And often what you get is a bylaw backed from them with still references that have Fairview instead of High Prairie. Um, and it always bothered me a bit. So one way of looking at it with Mackenzie, they don't have a big track record. They don't have a big huge pile of cookie cutters. We'll be getting something that they've actually put a little bit of heart and soul into it, hopefully, for us. Um, that's just one way of looking at it, joining up the Mr. Cost. Do we have that kind of understanding?
Okay. Are there any other comments? Any other, could you read the motion back, please?
Moved by Counselor Danaka. That council approved the request for proposal bid for the Town of High Prairie land use bylaw, complete review for the, in the amount of thirty-seven thousand five hundred and fifty-five, be awarded to Mackenzie Municipal Service Agency.
All in favor? The motion is carried. The Alberta Urban Municipality Association follow-up letters. Counselor After?
Make a motion that council director administration prepare letters for the mayor, or deputy mayor's signatures for Honorable Fred Moore, Minister Dana McLean, Minister Wayne Drydale, K nine deputy commander for Alberta, Mary Ann Ryan, Minister of Health, Stephen Mendel, and Honorable Anne Anne A U. Pearl Calahaza, expressing the town of High Prairie's appreciation for taking the time to meet with council at the two thousand and fourteen A U M A.
Discussion? Counselor Danaka?
Um, it's not a discussion. It's just that if we are sending these letters, could we please get their names spelt properly? Uh, Mary Ann Ryan is with an I and not a Y. And I thought it was dry as the L, not dry L.
I think so too. There's an S there, I believe.
It just looks a little bit more professional if we get their names spelt right when we send them later.
And I believe that we've already sent a letter to the Minister of Health.
Yes, we did.
So we won't be sending another one to Mr. to Honorable Stephen Mendel?
Our letter says seven forty-one two.
And are they spelled right?
Yeah, it's spelled right, sir.
Counselor After, or Ball?
Ooh, back and forth for you today.
I know. Name change, name change.
Yeah.
There it is.
And so.
It's not for the audience.
Um, K nine deputy commander, is it not, uh, she is the uh division commander for Division K, not K nine?
Yeah.
It's K division.
You can be Division.
Not the dog division.
Not the dog division, yes.
I'm sure there's some K nines that would be really appreciated.
Okay.
Sorry.
Oh, no, thank you, thank you.
Oh, you're welcome.
That's welcome. And sometimes it's, it's a surprise. Thank you.
So do we, want to read the uh motion back with the amendments? I guess the changes?
It's just the name change. I just spelled it right.
No, it's it's the pronunciations correctly.
Oh, okay. All right then.
Well, the only one would be taking out uh Mayor Mendel, right?
K nine.
Right.
No.
Or not. We all, I I'm in the same thing.
It's okay, it's a good approach.
Okay, did we leave it in there? Because we're, okay, did.
Oh, because we already sent it. We just, it's out of here. Okay. All right, um, are there any others that we should add? Okay, okay. All in favor? Carrier, could you pick that? Uh, we've lost one of our counselors. Do we want to take a break?
Yes, please.
Sure.
Counselor Ball?
Well, I was just, I can add it after, but I was, we were talking, we made a meeting.